Move on with the reception. We should be able to keep this agenda moving pretty quickly.
Approval of April 5, 2021, regular meeting minutes?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Fenton.
Move to approve the minutes of the Board of Trustees' meeting of April 5, 2021.
Second.
Call the roll.
Trustee Fenton?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Dodge?
Aye.
Trustee Calandrello?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Museum Development Advisory Board appointment?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Malani?
Move to advise and consent the appointment of trustee William Healy as a liaison to the Museum Development Advisory Board?
Second.
And just so everyone's clear that we're gonna make all of these approvals and then we will have all of the commission members come down at one time and we'll swear everybody in one mass swearing in to keep things moving along. Any comments on the museum board? Call the roll.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Fenton?
Aye.
Trustee Dodge?
Aye.
Trustee Calandrello?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Economic Development Advisory Board?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Malani?
Move to advise and consent the appointment of Ray Oral to the Economic Development Advisory Board?
Second.
Call the roll.
Mr. Mayor, have a question on this one?
Sure.
Did, I know Ed Saxon was just appointed, was he to resign or replaced?
He is no longer going to be on the board, it's going to be Ray Oral. And he needs, we need a Technology Commission member and an Economic Development Advisory Board member, and then we have someone else going on the board as well.
As in, oh, he resigned, thank you.
Call the roll.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Fenton?
Aye.
Dodge?
Aye.
Calandrello?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Open Lands Fund Commission appointment?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Malani?
Move to confirm and approve the village president's immediate removal of all member, current members of the Orland Park Open Lands Fund Commission, all whose terms have long been expired, and I move to confirm and approve the village president's appointment of the following new members to the Orland Park Open Lands Fund Commission. Dale Carver as chairperson, Diane DeVito, Fred Garfield, trustee Cynthia Nelson Katsinas, John McCannon, Paul Shaheen, and Patrick Zamparelli, and consistent with the bylaws of the Orland Park Open Lands Corporation, which requires each member of the Board of Directors to be a member of the Open Lands Fund Commission, I move to replace all current members of the Board of Directors of the Orland Park Open Lands Corporation with all the new members of the Open Lands Fund Commission.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Fenton?
I'd like to take this opportunity to say that this is the most despicable and disrespectful motion I've ever seen in my 28 years of being on the board, and the fact that a trustee would even read this motion is terrible. These people are being shown nothing but disrespect for all the years that they've done what exactly what their charter stated for them to do, which was to save and preserve and protect the open lands of Orland Park, and this is total insult to these individuals. They weren't even notified that this was happening. That's all I have to say.
Any other questions or comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Fenton?
No.
Trustee Dodge?
No.
Trustee Calandrello?
No.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Plan Commission?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Katsinas?
I move to advise and consent the appointment of John Nugent to the Plan Commission? Second.
Any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Trustee Fenton?
Aye.
Trustee Dodge?
Aye.
Trustee Calandrello?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Recreation Advisory Board?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Malani?
Move to advise and consent the appointment of Diane DeVito and Colleen Panega to the Recreation Advisory Board?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Fenton?
Aye.
Trustee Dodge?
Aye.
Trustee Calandrello?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Stellwagen Farm, Family Farm Foundation?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Healy?
I move to advise and consent the appointment of trustee-elect Sean Campus and Carol McGurry to the Stellwagen Family Farm Foundation?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Fenton?
No.
Trustee Dodge?
No.
Trustee Calandrello?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Technology Commission?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Malani?
Move to advise and consent the appointment of Carol McGurry and Ray Oral to the Technology Commission?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Fenton?
Aye.
Trustee Dodge?
Aye.
Trustee Calandrello?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
All right, if everyone that is here, because I think some of you are, I will swear you all in. Go ahead.
Monarch Butterfly Day proclamation?
Waiting for it to download. Monarch Butterfly Day 2021, whereas the monarch butterfly is an iconic North American species who from caterpillar butterfly has captured the imagination of millions of Americans, and whereas 25 years ago, more than 1 billion eastern monarch butterflies migrated to Mexico, but by the winter of 2015, only 60 million made the trip. And whereas cities, towns, and counties have a critical role to play to help save the monarch butterfly, and the Village of Orland Park has played a leadership role by establishing two monarch wayfinding habitats at the Village Hall Green Roof and Stellwagen Farm Prairie. And whereas every citizen of Orland Park can make a difference for the monarch by planting native milkweed and nectar plants to provide habitat for the monarch and pollinators in locations where people live, work, learn, and play, and whereas on behalf of the people of Orland Park, who have already joined me in creating healthy habitat for these magnificent butterflies, I'm honored for Orland Park to become an official Monarch Village USA, and I encourage other city officials across the nation to take a stand with me so that the monarch butterfly will once again flourish across the continent. Now therefore, I, Keith Pico, mayor of Village of Orland Park, Cook and Will Counties, Illinois, do hereby proclaim April 30 as Monarch Butterfly Day in the Village of Orland Park, and urge all citizens to support the efforts to protect the monarch butterfly and promote their well-being for the benefit of present and future generations dated this 19th day of April 2021.
Earth Day and Arbor Day proclamations?
Proclamation, Earth Day/Arbor Day 2021, whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are renewable resource giving us paper, wood, paper and wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our committee and community, and whereas the Village of Orland Park has been recognized as a Tree City USA for 33 years by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree planting ways. Now therefore, I, Keith Pico, mayor of Village of Orland Park, Cook and Will Counties, Illinois, do hereby proclaim April 22, 2021, as Earth Day, and April 30, 2021, as Arbor Day in the Village of Orland Park, and urge all citizens to support efforts to protect our environment and promote the well-being of present, future generations dated this 19th day of April 2021.
Accounts payable from April 6, 2021, to April 19, 2021?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Healy?
I move to approve the accounts payable from April 6, 2021, through April 19, 2021, in amount of $2,588,627.53.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Trustee Fenton?
Aye.
Trustee Dodge?
Aye.
Trustee Calandrello?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Consent agenda?
Consent agenda, item A, payroll for April 2, 2021 approval, item B, disposal of equipment recommended ordinance, item C, Orland Park Police Supervisors Association Collective Bargaining Agreement, item D, 401A Contract Amendment, item E, Concrete Flatwork SPWDA Joint Bid Orland Park Bid Award, item F, Tree Trimming for Road Improvement Program Bid Award, item G, PACE 2021 Certification and Assurances Approval, item H, Water Supply Service Agreement in Illinois American Water Company for Alpine Heights Subdivision, item I, Megan Nicole Ridge Special Service Area Number 9 Ordinance proposing the establishment of a special service area and providing for a public hearing, item J, Chick-fil-A Drive-Thru Expansion and Building Addition Development Petition for a Special Use Permit Amendment with modifications, variance, site plan elevations, and landscape plan, item K, Bell Tire Development Petition for Special Use Permit for Plan Development, Special Use Permit for Motor Vehicle Services Rezoning, Site Plan Elevations, Landscape Plan, and Plotted Subdivision, item L, Qualifications-Based Selection Policy for Engineering Consulting Services, item M, Utility Bill Printing Services, item N, amend Title VII, Chapter IV, number of Class J liquor licenses, item O, an ordinance amending Title VII, Chapter IV, Section 7-4-6, 6 of the Orland Park Village Code in regard to Class F liquor license, item P, an ordinance amending Title VII, Chapter IV, Section 7-4-6, 7 of the Orland Park Village Code in regards to Class G and Class G5 liquor licenses, item Q, Queen of Hearts Raffle License.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Malani?
Move to approve items A through Q of the consent agenda?
Second.
Any, call the roll.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Fenton?
Aye.
Trustee Dodge?
Aye.
Calandrello?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
An ordinance amending Title VIII, Chapter VI of the Orland Park Village Code in regard to carrying of a concealed firearm on or into a prohibited area?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Malani?
Ordinance number, please?
5608.
I move to approve ordinance number 5608 entitled, "An Ordinance Amending Title VIII, Chapter VI of the Orland Park Village Code in regard to the carrying of a concealed firearm on or into a prohibited area."
Second.
Any comments? So, just to summarize, this ordinance is a good option for CCL carriers that mistakenly carry you into the wrong place, given the ever-growing list of restricted locations. Rather than referring them to, referring an otherwise cooperative CCL carrier who made a mistake to the county and revoked their CCL, it allows us to give a municipal ticket that has consequence to the carrier but not a revocation at the state level. Call the roll.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Fenton?
Aye.
Trustee Dodge?
Aye.
Trustee Calandrello?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Telecommunication System Infrastructure?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Malani?
Move to approve the three-year contract with Insight Public Sector Incorporated through the Omnia Partners Cooperative Purchase Contract for IT Products and Services, number 4400006644, with work to be performed by Mindsight for a cost of $552,522.47, plus a $50,055 contingency for a not-to-exceed amount of $602,577.47, and authorize the village manager to approve change orders not to exceed the contingency amount, and to authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Fenton?
Aye.
Trustee Dodge?
Aye.
Trustee Calandrello?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
2021 Centennial Park West Concert Series, third concert?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Healy?
I move to approve adding Mark Martel's The Ultimate Queen Experience, Purple Veins, The Essential Prince Tribute Band, and George Michael Reborn Tribute to the 2021 Centennial Park West Concert Series, in addition to artists Blue Oyster Cult, Mark Farner's American Band, and The Fabulous Thunderbirds on June 26, 2021, and August 22, 2021, featuring Scott Stapp Filter and Forecast for a total not to exceed $549,336, and to authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Trustee Fenton?
No.
Trustee Dodge?
Aye.
Trustee Calandrello?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
This is a nice addition to the third concert that was already budgeted, so great job, staff, in lining up this group for September 3.
Digital Budget Book and Capital Budgeting Platform?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Healy?
I move to authorize the village manager to execute an agreement with ClearGov for its digital budget book and capital budgeting modules for a total cost of $90,131.25 for 2021 through 2020, or subject to village attorney review.
Second.
Kevin, could you give us a really brief overview of this?
Sure. I'll provide just a real quick snapshot. This digital budget book program will provide better online access, easier for staff to put together, but also easier for users to view the budget at home. This is a sample from Shawnee, Kansas, and as you can see, the digital budget book has all the major sections that a viewer could want, and you can look down at different items, such as organization chart, as you can see here, there's also, you know, things can be added and customized, like a land use guide, that type of thing. Then, what the users can do is look at different sections of the budget and actually highlight the, or look at the different, let me get to that point right here, highlight the things that they are interested in seeing. By just clicking on these buttons, by selecting and deselecting, you can view the items that you are interested in seeing, whether it's revenues, expenses, the general fund, specific other funds, all that information is available at the user's fingertips. Charts can be customized and changed as the user sees fit and as they have a desire to see. In addition to that, users can, I'll just pause this program right now, users can identify their own specific document that they want, whether it's a specific fund or department, and it creates a fully customized budget book, budget document, digital PDF, that they can have exactly the information that they need, that's the GFOA award quality-level budget, but it's customized to everything that the exact user would like to see. So this is a new program, it integrates with our existing and future ERP software, and it's easy for staff to implement, but most importantly, it's easy for stakeholders to view exactly what they would like to see within the village budget document. So with that, that's just a quick highlight, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions or comments?
Mayor Pico?
Trustee Dodge?
Just a quick comment, I want to thank staff for doing a nice digital update to an idea that we've been working on for a while with printed annual reports, so thank you for the efforts.
Any other comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Fenton?
Aye.
Trustee Dodge?
Aye.
Trustee Calandrello?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
FY 2021 Budget Amendment Number One?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Healy?
I move to approve a decrease to the revenue budget of $97,350 for the general fund, a decrease in the general fund expenditure budget in the amount of $412,742, an increase in the capital projects fund expenditure budget by $367,201, an increase in the water and sewer fund expense budget of $888,255, and an increase in the recreation and parks fund expenditure budget of $106,409, as detailed in the fiscal year 2021 Amendment Number One worksheet.
Second.
And George, just to be clear, the increases by and large are due to rollovers from last year, correct? Correct, that's what I thought, all right. Any other comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Fenton?
Aye.
Trustee Dodge?
Aye.
Trustee Calandrello?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
An ordinance amending appendices A and B to ordinance 5571?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Healy?
John, can I have an ordinance number, please?
5609.
I move to pass ordinance number 5609 entitled, "Ordinance Amending Appendices A and B to Ordinance Number 5571."
Second.
Any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Fenton?
Aye.
Trustee Dodge?
Aye.
Trustee Calandrello?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Agenda Initiative Independent Investigation of Single Family Homes Purchased and Sold by the Village?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Katsinas?
I move that we table, we take from the table the motion to accept a proposal for special counsel legal services for the investigation of properties purchased and sold by the Village of Orland Park from Hervasis, Condon, and Bersini, and to authorize the village manager to execute a professional service agreement with Hervasis, Condon, and Bersini, subject to village attorney review. Second.
Call the roll on the taking it off the table?
Mr. Chairman?
Call the roll on taking it off the table?
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Fenton?
Aye.
Trustee Dodge?
Just for taking it off the table, aye.
Trustee Calandrello?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Healy?
I move to amend the motion on the floor to substitute the law firm of Hervis, Condon, and Bersani, PC, with the law firm of Ehrenberg and Golden.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Any comments on amending the motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Calandrello?
I just wonder what the difference was, why the motion was there, is there a reason behind it?
Trustee, I don't know, Trustee Healy made the motion.
Staff, Dennis, anyone who knows why we would mix it up?
Trustee Healy, did you have a reason for making the amendment?
I had, I was unfamiliar with some of these law firms, but I have made inquiries, and I've heard of some good respectful things of Ehrenberg and Golden, and I know that they're completely, I mean, I don't know anybody there, and I hope that they're completely independent of anybody.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Katsinas?
They were on our original table of attorneys that the village manager looked at, if I'm not correct, is that correct?
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? Call the roll. On the amendment?
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Trustee Fenton?
No.
Trustee Dodge?
No.
Trustee Calandrello?
Abstain.
What was that?
Abstain, for what reason?
Yes, so whoever law firm this passes will be investigating, actually, a question that you're asking a question, so I'm abstaining. George, my question then is, is the 99 floods and zero floods, all those homes in this investigation, which included possible criminal conduct, is that going to be a part of the, that's what it says, the, somehow, when I was 16 years old, a family member bought, the village bought a house after appraisal, after appraisal, and then everything opened, so I was just wondering, that would have a conflict interest as a family member investigating of, that's why I'm abstaining, sir.
Okay.
Is that good enough?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
So now discussing the amended motion? Any comments? Call the roll.
Did somebody make a motion?
Say again?
The original motion, that?
No, call the roll on the amended motion, which sought to authorize the village manager to execute a professional services agreement with Ehrenberg and Golden, subject to village attorney review, and to accept the proposal for special counsel legal services for the investigation of properties purchased and sold by the Village of Orland Park from Ehrenberg and Golden.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Trustee Fenton?
No.
Trustee Dodge?
No.
Trustee Calandrello?
Abstain.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye, motion carries forward to two.
Motion carries forward to two.
Real property license and artifacts agreements between Village of Orland Park and Orland Historical Society.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Fenton.
Move to approve the real property license and artifacts agreement between the Village of Orland Park and the Orland Park and the Orland Historic Society, and authorize the village president to execute said agreement. Second.
Any questions or comments? And this is an issue that's been hanging over us for quite some time. It's taken a lot of time and effort, but I'm thankful that we resolved it. Thank you to staff. Thank you to Sarah at the museum, and thanks to the Orland Historical Society for addressing these issues. Call the roll.
Trustee Fenton.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Dodge.
Aye.
Trustee Calandrello.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Mayor Pico. Proclamations honoring Village Clerk John Mahalik, trustee James V. Dodge, trustee Kathleen M. Fenton, and trustee Daniel T. Calandrello.
So as a custom, I have some comments to make, and then I'm going to give each of the four people that we're honoring tonight a chance to speak. So I appreciate all their help in taking Orland Park into a positive direction over the last four years. In my first meeting four years ago, immediately upon arrival, the board agreed to stop a $23 million land purchase that had no due diligence or appraisal. That was a good decision. We renegotiated the exit of 9750, which reduced our loss by to only 7 million, which is also good. And we stopped an $8 million incentive to a movie theater chain, which is now out of business. So it's a good thing that we did that. Together, we invested in our neglected infrastructure. So we increased investment in our local roads. We've advanced that program in at least, at least four years from plan over the last two. We've increased and improved our investments in our parks from one park every two years to seven refurbished parks last year, plus 18 tennis and basketball courts. We refurbished the John Humphrey complex, which was built over 30 years ago. We instituted a lot of good government reforms. We enacted term limits, which passed 89% to 11. We eliminated pensions for elected officials. We lowered the mayor's trustees and clerks' pay back to 2004 levels. We passed an ethics ordinance that is the best in the state and is a model for everyone else to follow. We increased transparency by broadcasting these meetings live, like they are tonight. We revamped and improved our commission structure to enhance our citizen involvement. We also pulled Orland Park back from some potential fiscal difficulties. We reduced our debt by over 37 million. We reduced our operating expenditures by 14% and staff by 10%. We stopped acquiring properties, and we focused on core services. This has allowed us to keep our bond ratings, restore our projected reserves to healthy levels, and manage through COVID without taking any drastic actions. We also moved economic development forward in the face of some very significant challenges, including national bankruptcies of Sears, Carson's, and Toys R Us, as well as the global pandemic. In the last four years, we've opened over 530 businesses, including Von Maurer, Stan's Donuts, Duluth Trading, Northwestern, and Moran's Families of Brands. We've supported expansions, including University of Chicago, Payless Laola, Whole Foods, and the Apple Store. We've approved several other businesses that are also opening in the coming year, including Pete's Fresh Market, Caputo's Markets, REI, AMC, and Oncology Group in the old Robert Morris site behind the mall, and multiple restaurants are going in at the Toys R Us site. Construction permits in 2020 were more than in 2019, and the first quarter of 2021 are higher than in the previous five years. We've approved agreement, an agreement at the Triangle with a developer to develop the remainder of the Triangle that has been ongoing for over two decades. We led the village through COVID. We've supported our businesses. We fought to keep them open and gave them guidance to open safely. We helped our community keep a sense of normalcy by finding safe ways to continue doing our events through COVID. We've opened our preschool in early September and has remained open and operated safely throughout this entire time. We also have worked together to improve the quality of life in Orland Park. We took action to keep Orland Park safe when riots and looting were exploding throughout the region and nation. We supported our police department and their efforts to keep us safe, and the results speak for themselves. The lowest, lower index crimes in each of the last four years to the lowest number of index crimes in 26 years. The lowest violent crimes for towns over 50,000 people in Illinois over the last two years. Orland Square is the safest mall in Chicagoland, and we were named the safest city in Illinois in 2020. We've also approved and implemented a concert series for the first time since Centennial Park West was built for this purpose over 15 years ago. In fact, we added a third concert tonight. None of these things get done in a vacuum. It took a team of people with different ideas, but the same goal, to put our citizens first and do the right thing. I want to thank trustees Dodge, Fenton, and Calandrello for their efforts to implement all of these improvements during the last four years. I also do not want to forget to thank Clerk Mahalik for his efforts to streamline the clerk's office and improve efficiencies. The improvements we have implemented in the clerk's office over the last four years, thanks to the village board and the clerk, have reduced our staffing needs in that department by 71%. So all of this has been great for the village. So I want to thank all of you for your longtime service and everything that you've done and everything that you did over the last four years to get all of this implemented. Thank you very much. So now I'm just going to call you each down one by one and give you an opportunity, I'll give you your plaque and give you each an opportunity to speak. Start with the clerk. I want to thank you for this, this watch and this proclamation. I just want to thank the people of Orland Park for the support for the year. Thanks, I just want to, I'm sure, very, uh, pay my hand, and say how we're a show, and, uh, get everybody credit, and I'm pleased.
I want to thank you, John. I want to thank you, everyone. I want to thank the people of Orland Park, and the whole person, I want to thank my loving wife, my beloved wife. I felt we could have a fun day, because I do love you, and I appreciate that. I know, I know, but, uh, I want to thank her, my wife, my guy, my wife. When we had bad meetings, we had bad meetings, we had people attacking each other, she was one of the people saying, who is the right thing? So, I want to thank my kids, Mia, Daniel, and Francis. I think she only asked me to move the house. I look forward to it. She only asked a couple weeks ago that, uh, she is my wife, and I'm, so, uh, I look forward to seeing how you are, okay? I want to thank my parents, my family, being here, my parents always supported public service, giving us community, making the great decisions, and, uh, standing here as well, I hope you guys, I appreciate that, and I appreciate you, and I love you. And I want to thank the last few people in Orland Park who supported you for years. I want to thank you all for making, like, uh, very dear, 21 persons, uh, to make sure peace is very well, and I'm, uh, I'm proud of you, so. Uh, and I want to thank everyone, staff, the whole, the team, uh, with some great village managers, with some great staff members, and, uh, I'm not going to name all of you, you're all great people. It's not a bad debate. These villages, they weren't a big village, where they prepared that from the part-time lifeguard, uh, night watch collars, police officer, all the way up to the little, um, explicit that, and why we, so I appreciate that, and they all support our programs, and, uh, we do a lot of good things, the live service, we do some less, seven and a half years of available, uh, that I look for, that my family, they're very, very, very
Thanks, everyone. I'll try and keep this short. Publicly available documents, so I'll just read some of the highlights, which has typically been customary in these kind of events in Orland Park, for the proclamation about outgoing officials to be read. So I appreciate the mayor's comments earlier, a lot of those discussion points you've seen recently, often, and I think they do capture many things about Orland Park. But I just kind of want to hit a couple of highlights in terms of my personal background. A little uncomfortable, they have to read your own story, but bear with me for a minute. So whereas, James Dodge was a loyal member of the Village of Orland Park from various and sundry years, Brighton Park resident, DePaul University, University of Chicago MBA, Army National Guard, and a great corporate career. But I've always had two walks in my life. One, which is to serve the public here in Orland Park for 32 years, and two, I've built my family, I've raised my family here, built a number of homes in Orland Park and helped build a great town. So it's been a dual walk. I've had multiple careers. And over the years, been involved in a number of big things for Orland Park, all of it because it was about service to the greater good. That's always been the notion here, and I appreciate the people of Orland Park allowing me to do that. Sometime back at one of my inaugurals, I said, "Politics in its purest form is a contest of ideas." Well, as many of us in this room know, politics in these United States is not quite its pure form anymore. It's changed. It's a little bit different. So the humble notion of greatest good for the greatest number oftentimes gets set by the side, but that's been one of my guiding principles for all eight times I've stood before the people of Orland Park and said, "Let me serve you," and I thank you, Orland Park, for allowing me to do that. And so I need to thank the people of Orland Park. Appreciate that. My family, obviously, for, you see the excitement we go through as public officials up here on Monday night, and it's pretty, pretty exciting stuff when you get right down to the kind of contracts we're authorizing, but that's what you do to build a great community. And when I think about the hundreds of decisions, maybe even thousands of decisions over 32 years, starting when I was first elected clerk, I had five meetings a month back then. We were growing so fast, right? And I'm very much grateful that as I traveled a lot around for my corporate career, I saw a lot of towns. And every time I came home on a Thursday or a Friday, I was always more proud of Orland Park because we designed this town well. We have a great community for a lot of decisions that currently add up to Orland Park's strengths. And I'm proud of that accomplishment in particular. My favorite quote, one of my favorite statistics, I should say, is, "We're one of the few communities that I know of that has a neighborhood park within a half mile of pretty much every subdivision in Orland Park." That takes planning, that takes commitment. We've got big parks. On all those flights going south to Texas, one of the few identifiable, easily identifiable things in the South suburbs is Centennial Park. You can see it from the air. Made me proud many times. Our financial management, and the mayor alluded to this, how did we weather the financial storm in '08 and '09? Decades worth of smart financial management, decades worth of budgetary awards, decades worth of double A-plus bond ratings, years and years of multi-million dollar investments in state roads, in train stations, in neighborhood roads, because those were the priorities of the people that have returned a number of us to, uh, to, uh, office. We gave back millions of dollars in tax rebates because we had the financial strength to do that, and retail was a different industry back then. I sincerely hope Orland Park and future boards can continue to build on all those strengths. Another key piece, and maybe not everybody sees this, when you drive around Orland, look at all the houses. You go to a lot of communities in America, and you see the same, one house to another, cookie cutter housing. We don't do that in Orland, never have, and I'm very proud to have been a part of a board that has done that. We talked open lands earlier. We went to the voters of Orland Park and we said, "Trust us with $20 million voluntarily to take land out of production to build a great community, to build a great base of assets," which we did, and I sincerely hope future boards keep that sacred trust. We often see our police officers in these meetings. We just had a quick ceremony the other day with the chief of police and others. Takes decades to build a great police department. This board and previous boards have consistently supported Orland Park police officers, and we all know, it's getting increasingly tough to be a cop in America, so if anything, they continue to need more support. For years, we've been doing strategic plans. It's great to see that there's future updates coming of our strategic plans to keep guidance to future boards and staff. It's great to see those types of ideas capitalized on. The mayor alluded to a bunch of incentive programs. Absolutely. We've been using them for decades. The same basic principle of the economic programs we use today to keep Orland strong were set in place sometime back. I'm thrilled to see those continue forward, as you saw, staff is evolving what we're doing with our transparency. One of the projects I led, Orland Park was the first community in Illinois, the first in Illinois, to get a 100% transparency award from the Illinois Policy Institute. Very pleased to see we're ever expanding those. We can have a bright future in this town, right? Because of the successes of the past, and my sincere hope is that future boards continue in that spirit, the greatest good for the greatest number. So I started earlier by thanking my family. I'll close with thanking some of the professionals that I've served with over the many years, and you Orland Park residents, I cannot begin to thank you enough for letting me serve you for 32 years as a trustee. Thank you.
Even though I wore the bling for my daughter. As trustee Dodge said, it is a little strange to stand up here and read what you've been doing for the last 28 years, but I'll try to condense it, and I appreciate all the work that Diana did, back and forth with this, even though she gave up after looking in my office at the awards and things. But I also got those awards on behalf of all the residents in this community. I wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for my family. One person of my family is missing, but he's been with me all this time, and I know he's here tonight. So I'd like to thank Michael. But I also want to take this opportunity to thank my daughter Amy and her husband Nate, my son Matthew and his wife Rachel, Mike's sister Donna and her husband Bob, my cousin Lori and Dave, my niece and nephew Tim and Kelly. And Tim and Kelly, thank you for serving this community. They're both sergeants in the Chicago Police Department. Thank you very much for your service. To my good friends who were with me back in 1993 when I first ran, Paul Aubin, who'd never thought this was going to last this long, he was my dedicated treasurer, and his wife Sandy, Bob and Wendy Conley. Bob said to me, he said, "I'll never wear pink for anybody, but I'll wear it for you." I thank you, Bob, for that. All of my friends, and if I miss anybody, I apologize, but I have served on the Open Lands Commission. I was very privileged to be the liaison for the museum board. I've been a member of the Stellwagen Foundation. And one of my projects that I've been trying to do for the past 28 years is to make this community, although we're almost 50, 60,000 people, we also need to keep that warm and fuzzy in the small community that we have. In open lands, we purchased over 300 acres of open space and three farms. One of the farms is used from July through October for a standalone farmer's market. It's just a farm stand that everybody appreciates, everybody loves, and the Boli Farm is here to be protected. The Stellwagen Foundation, that farm is absolutely beautiful. We are having events out there this year, and they have tours in September. So I really appreciate, hope everybody goes out and appreciates and looks at what this Open Lands Commission and the residents who entrusted them in making good decisions have brought to the community, because not very many communities can say that they've saved three farms and purchased over 300 acres of land to be saved and not just built on in a bunch of asphalt. Along with that, I was had the privilege of being chairman of every department in this village, finance, which obviously finance was great probably when I left, that's Jim's department, and police. We have the best police department in the nation. I have always been a strong supporter of the police department. When I was their chairperson, we got motorcycles, we got bicycles, and I told them, "Get all your toys now," and we did. We had a budget that we could afford it, and they are the best of the best. I was, I worked with Chief McCarthy, and I've had the privilege of working with Chief Mitchell, and they are wonderful individuals, and they will make this village a proud place to live, a safe place to live, and we just need to show them a lot of respect and gratitude. Thank you to the police department. One of the initiatives I tried to do before I was leaving office was to create, since we had such a horrible year last year, a heroes park next to the police station. The Village of Orland Park owns that land, it's to the south of the station, and all I was asking for was a sign, not a monument, nothing expensive, just a nice sign that said, "Heroes Park, dedicated to the first responders during the 2020 pandemic." It was very difficult for everyone in this community to go through that event. Nobody ever in their lifetime, I'm sure, thought they would, but we had first responders that were there every day, protecting us, taking care of us, and they still do that. This park would give them an opportunity, since the fire station's administration office is just down the street, our medical complex is just down the road. It would just give them someplace to go, have lunch, little pergola, picnic bench, a couple benches, and a place that we could show them how much, how grateful we are that they were there for us in a very tragic time in our, you know, community. So I hope the next board of trustees and the mayor will go along with that, and hopefully we can see something built there just to honor the first responders in this community. I was also chairperson of Recreation, true to my heart, Special Rec. Nick, Bridget, Kathleen, great job, keep going with those Owls and the Lions baseball team, you do a great job. Special Rec, they're wonderful kids, wonderful adults, and they make our community proud, especially in the Special Olympics. They all come home award winners and trophy winners, and they just come home with those medals, and they're so proud. Finance, technology, technology department is probably going to be glad that they won't be getting, oh, God, my computers. getting, "Oh, God, my computer's locked up again, and it won't open." So I will give my computer very happily to David and Jason, and that will probably say, "This iPad is out of here." I already saw my computer on my desk was gone. So I just can't thank my family once again, but I can't thank the residents enough for allowing me to serve and represent them for the last 28 years. Time has gone by fast. I started when I was young. We'll just stick with that one. I started when I knew Jim had hair, but he always said I had the best. So all we can do is do what we're here for. I've always voted from my heart. I've always voted for what I felt was best for the community. I can't thank all the individuals enough who served on commissions and did what they felt was best for this community. And to all the people that I've had the opportunity to make friends, work with, and to the board members, past and present, trustee Gear and her husband Jim are here this evening. Thank you very much for giving me this opportunity. And once again, thank you to my family. My grandchildren aren't here tonight because this is their bedtime, and we don't want any, you know, upsetting that because cranky people, and I get them tomorrow, so. But they're the light of my light right now, and so is my family. And like I said, I know I'm repeating myself, but thank you so much for letting me be your trustee for 28 years.
John, do we have anybody?
Nobody gave me any.
Okay, so board comments. If you guys would like to comment any further, trustee Fenton?
Yes, I just want to thank and congratulate Sarah, our curator at the museum. She applied for and received a $750 Illinois Humanitaries grant for an upcoming program to be held at the museum, and an Illinois Arts Council Agency grant for $450 for an upcoming program out at the Stellwagen Farm. Both of those programs are listed in our brochure and online. And once again, thank you so very much for giving me this opportunity.
Trustee Dodge?
Just, you know, again, it's been, you know, and when you start on a journey, you don't quite know how it's going to end or when it's going to end. But I've enjoyed being a public servant, and I can't begin to thank family and friends enough for the support over the years. And as I said to the good people of Orland Park, thank you. I can't describe how honored I've been to be a servant for you. Stood for election every four years, eight times you said yes. I very much appreciate it. And so it's time to go off and and do some other things in life. But again, thank you sincerely from the bottom of my heart to allow me to serve you.
Trustee Calendrello?
Just want to echo, I want to thank everyone again. Thank my family. I thank the residents of Orland Park. Last seven and a half years were the honor of my life. And I just want to thank everyone. I wish good luck to the mayor and the board coming up. It's been honor, and it's been a blessing. And I guess I'll see you at the park. Thanks.
Trustee Healy?
I'll be brief. I want to say thanks to Jim, Kathy, and Dan for your many years of service. A sincere thank you.
Trustee Katsinas?
I too want to say thank you to trustee Dodge, trustee Fenton, and trustee Calendrello for your years of service to the residents, and also Clerk Mahalik. He's done an outstanding job with always seeming to get it right on the schedule of who's up next and pronouncing my name right. So I thank you for that. And trustee Calendrello, I wish you the very best with you and your family, your mom and dad, and your beautiful kids. I'm sure our paths will cross. Thank you.
Trustee Malani?
Thank you. You know, I've appreciated the last two years working together with trustee Dodge, trustee Calendrello, and trustee Fenton. And I'm glad we're able to make great progress on many initiatives and work to move Orland Park forward one step at a time. I also thank Clerk Mahalik for keeping our meetings on track and continuing supplying with accurate information and to the public as well. And I wish you all the best in what you choose to do moving on and moving forward. And thank you all for your service to our great community. But as we look forward, you know, our next meeting brings about change. We'll welcome three new trustees to the board and also welcome a new clerk. So we're also looking forward to continue to build those relationships and continue moving down the path of making Orland Park a great place to live, work, and play. Thank you all for coming tonight, and have a good night.
Thank you. So I already made most of my comments, but again, I would like to thank trustees Fenton, Dodge, Calendrello, and Clerk Mahalik for their service. Public service isn't always easy, but I find it to always be rewarding. I learned it from my dad, who was a village board member several several mayors ago. And trustee Dodge is absolutely right. It's everything that's been laid in place for us was started back then and continued forward. So the I saw I've seen comprehensive plans since 1973, and I know the last one we did, I believe, was in 2013. So we've we've had those plans. We've followed those plans, and we will continue to do that. And I know that all the trustees sitting up here, you know, honor that public trust and that public service. But again, I want to thank all all three of the trustees that are leaving tonight, as well as Clerk Mahalik, for all of their hard work. And we all appreciate it. The staff appreciates it, and the Village of Orland Park residents appreciate it. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Call or roll?
Trustee Fenton?
Aye.
Trustee Calendrello?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.